I would like to call to order the November 20th, 2023 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners regular meeting. Welcome, everyone. We are very pleased, excuse me, to have our youth commissioner Connor Solvason with us tonight. Welcome to you, Connor. If you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would, please join me for a moment of silence for our invocation tonight. Thank you. Okay, first up is the approval or correction of the minutes. You all have a copy of those before you. Does anyone know of any corrections that need to be made to our minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to the approval of the agenda. You also have a copy of that in front of you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move now to recognitions and presentations. And we are delighted to be able to recognize Deputy Troutman on his retirement from the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office, and I welcome Sheriff Van Shaw to the podium.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, appreciate you having me here this evening. I have the honor of recognizing Kenneth Troutman, who has served with the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office for 27 and a half years. He's done an outstanding job, been a devoted employee, and served the citizens of Cabarrus County so well. If you'll indulge me, just a few highlights of Ken's career. Ken started with the Sheriff's Office back in May of 1996. He was initially assigned to our Communications Division, working in our 911 Center, and then later assigned to the Jail Division. And in 1999, he came out of the jail and was assigned to our Patrol Division. And during the time that he was assigned to the Patrol Division, he was also later assigned to our Harrisburg Division. So Ken served many years on patrol. He also served as a field training officer while on patrol in the Harrisburg Division. In February of 2010, Ken transferred to our Civil Division and was responsible for serving civil process during that period of time, where he also was a field training officer, and also was what is called our DSS officer, who helps move child support collections along. So a very important role that we do at the Sheriff's Office, making sure that we hold those responsible. And Ken did that, as well as going to court on those particular things as well. In July of 2020, Kevin was, Ken was promoted and assigned to our Criminal Investigation Division as an investigator in our SRO, or, excuse me, our Sex Offender Registry Division. And his day-to-day duties included keeping track of all of those that are a part of that system, making sure they're in compliance, and initiating any investigations where there's non-compliance, and making sure that we keep our community safe. So Ken has done an outstanding job, done a lot of different things. We really hate to see him go. I tried to convince him the other day to stick around for a little while, but he said, no, sir, I'll, I think I'll go ahead and go. But Ken will be retiring first of December.
Yes, sir.
So in just a short period of time, but I wanted to give Ken an opportunity to say a few things, if that's all right as well.
Thank you. It's been an honor to serve the county that I grew up in. I grew up here, I moved here when I was five, so I pretty much have lived here majority of my life. I'd like to thank the officers before me that I learned from, the training, the experiences I had with them, the support. Last, I'd like to thank Sheriff Shaw for giving me the support and opportunity to finish up my career. The past sheriff, Sheriff Riley, and then the sheriff that hired me, Robert Kennedy. I appreciate the opportunity. It's been a privilege to serve this county. Last, not least, I'd like to thank my parents when I first started my career, and then later on, my wife and my two boys. You have to have a family, you know, it helps you to make your career go, you know, when you have downtime. And they mean so much to me. And it's been a great honor to be here. I look forward to moving on, but I will miss this job. This is, you know, that's one thing, you never know what you're gonna do. You know, that was, you know, you come on the road, you might have to go arrest somebody, you might have to go change a tire. The job I do now, finishing up with, you know, you have to be vigilant in making sure you keep the county safe. But like I said, this is a great place, not only to work, but to live and raise my family, and I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken, I have a presentation for you. On behalf of a grateful county and the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, I wanted to present you with this. This is a little token of our appreciation for all you do.
All right.
And I'm hoping that you'll enjoy your retirement. But there's one thing that I've tried to retire three times, and I just can't make it for some reason. But one thing I can tell you about retirement, and that is, you never get a day off.
Yeah, that's true.
They're off.
I'm still busy, I'm sure. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thanks again, Ken, for everything.
Thank you.
I really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your service to Cabarrus County. As we always say, these retirement situations are, we're, we're happy that you're getting that reward, but sorry to see you go. So we move now to informal public comments. The, you, as, as I think everyone knows, you have three minutes to make comments. Please state your name and address when you step to the microphone. And our first card is from Jerry Anderson.
Jerry Anderson. First of all, whatever I say up here, I'm honest, because I'm scared not to be in front of the government. So what I got to say here is, a man tries to get help for his daughter, that's a helpless child, they, they say, yes, they'll do it. They take her under her care and give her a shot, schizo shot, and then neglect her and, and look after the child, look for the child. And for this child to get gone, there's got to be people in powerful places for this child to be gone. There got to be people powerful enough to send the police over to my house on Saturday to get her. And Kristi Wilhelm, you don't have to answer that question, but you said you couldn't speak on it, but Mr. Schu said you said this and that after the fact. I got it on tape. You can't help a family? I know you didn't know about it, because it's hidden evidence. This is hidden evidence right here. This ain't a form from me. This is in the federal building up there that you can get it. Somebody didn't expect me to be able to get this to prove anything. Anyway, it's hidden in the court. When you did the investigation, Mr. Cox, did you not think this was sufficient evidence to even mention in the courtroom? And I know the judge didn't know about it, because anybody with these problems, did you not know this is evidence? Fraudulent, everything. You got to have somebody that has shut the door and not answered questions powerful. Door don't like that. My child and my granddaughter, who I don't know where she's at, never saw her after that one day, they won't be with me this Thanksgiving. My daughter, who should have been an inspiration here and should have been a help, is dead. Man, y'all beat her to death. Y'all took her child. Give me that child. It's sad. It's sad what this family's gone through. It's sad. And you want to lock the doors. Somebody hid this evidence. Was it intentionally, or was it a mistake? You know, I hope y'all have a nice Thanksgiving. And I'm not mad at y'all. I love y'all. And I don't lie. I've never done wrong, anything in this city. I've never sinned in this city. And I never even as much had a traffic ticket. I honored, did honorable service, and I'm telling you something's wrong here. My daughter should be with me this Thanksgiving.
Okay, our next card is from Jeter Anderson.
Jeter Anderson. I too am coming up here to speak about the child scandal in Cabarrus. And a scandal, you have to have somebody shut their doors when you ask a question. They don't know what's going on. They can't, they're not qualified to answer your questions. You know, our case was investigated by Cabarrus County for wrongdoing. And during that wrongdoing, wrongdoing was done, because Richard doesn't understand federal evidence. This evidence is now evidence of what I'm talking about. I've been up here crying about my sister's exploitation and abuse and neglect. Don't believe me, come read the federal evidence for yourself. It's federal evidence that I believe should put some people away for what they did to Erica Anderson. And the taking of that kid from my father, that's his child in every way, shape, and form. And you come in, take that kid from people that love her, would die for her, didn't offer, well, I can speak about this for years and time, because it's true. It's true. I'm not criticizing anybody. I'm just up here telling the truth. Cabarrus County took a little black child, and they don't care. They don't care where she went, because I believe, well, y'all look at for yourself the federal evidence about Erica Anderson. And sealed cases, not a sealed case, went up there and got some documents saying who reported what and who reported this. Well, my dad put a bullet in his own family, I guess. He went up there and reported my sister. No, he went up there to get help for her. She was severely disabled. And this is evidence right here that should be looked at by Richard Cook, but he wants to hide it. He don't care. You should have looked at this, man. This tells everything about her. She couldn't defend herself in court. She needed a lawyer, like you need a king. She needs a lawyer, like you need a king to walk on, man. And everybody else is in on it, because we got a stuck-in Judge Kristi Wilhelm. I had to vote for her, because nobody else ran against Kristi Wilhelm. So she had to be the one. And then this stuck-in district attorney, well, I hear that she's got a husband that works for one of y'all. Who, who does she, whose husband does she work for? Maybe she won't help because of that. I don't know who's so influential up here, but they're so influential that this evidence is hidden. And this little girl, I believe is at some kind of grave risk. She's not with her family, and I can't report that, because Sharon Shutman won't, won't talk to me about it, will hang up. And that's crazy. So y'all heard that I think this little girl is at risk? Maybe y'all can report it, because I truly believe she's at risk not being with her family. Thank you.
Okay, our next card is from May, and it does not have a last name.
Hello, everyone. My name is Megan Mack, and in recognition of the upcoming Thanksgiving holiday, I was reflecting on things that I am grateful for. And regularly, most every day, one of those things is the hot water, after a shower, to just wash all the nonsense off, and a warm bed to sleep in, that's safe, secure. And those are some things that are on the top of my gratitude list regularly. I pay no more than 50% of my income, which is acceptable in this day and age. I am grateful for these things, because I know that these are important for my general well-being. Having these in my life allow me to invest in myself, my community, and my world. Unfortunately, my experience conflicts with the finding that fiscal year 2023 was a record year for the number of evictions in our county, and that we, in Cabarrus County, ranked number six in the state as numbers of evictions. I classify this as an eviction crisis. This is because the rent is too damn high. In fiscal year 2023, Cabarrus County evicted 1.5% of its population. This means that over 3,000 people now have an eviction filing on their record. Over 3,000 people now have a significantly higher chance of experiencing homelessness in the future. Aside from these statistics, it's what we're seeing every time that we walk around our community downtown. We all live here. The point that is blatantly apparent to me, and that it must be for others, is that there is the need for safe, affordable, and sustainable housing, and that this need is not being met. In 2023, when a community survey was completed, Cabarrus County residents ranked affordable housing as the top, the number one, need in our community, and was ranked as definitely needing more emphasis and prioritization. As a community, we must have housing for those starting out or starting over, that isn't being controlled by greedy billionaire companies essentially cutting off generations, millennials, Gen Zs, all of your grandchildren, everyone that you know that's younger than you, pretty much, from the American dream, a piece of land, somewhere that's safe, secure, that you can culture, cultivate, and do what you want with. In my opinion, as a doctoral student studying community psychology, I came across an article a few days ago that makes so much sense to me. This is community-led and community-owned housing. There's many different models. We can find a place to agree, whatever it looks like. I'm a fan of compromise. But I plead for this board of Cabarrus County to prioritize housing discussions, and specifically to invest into preventative housing solutions. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes all of the cards that we have for public comment tonight. So we will move now to our consent agenda. All of the items on our consent agenda are ones that were discussed at our work session two weeks ago. I think we have 12 items there. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to new business. We're happy to have from Economic Development Samantha Grass to talk about an economic development project, which will be followed by a public hearing. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to present the project. So Project Stone is Nicolock Paving Stones LLC. Their proposed project location is 3010 Newtown Way, southwest Concord. And this is at the grounds of Concord property. Nicolock has been a leading manufacturer and retailer of premium hardscape supplies for more than 50 years. They are proposing to build a 50,000-square-foot facility to include the manufacturing of concrete pavers, splitting of retaining walls, and other landscape products for manufacture and wholesale distribution. This would be their ninth manufacturing facility. They have existing manufacturing operations in New York, Connecticut, New Jersey, and Maryland. With this, they plan to create 30 new full-time jobs, with average wages exceeding our current county average wage. Projected investment is estimated to be $22 million in real and personal property. The Cabarrus County grant analysis is based on the estimated $22 million projected investment. Nicolock is asking for your consideration of a three-year, 85% economic development grant. Estimated grant for that three-year term is $357,398. The net revenue to the county during that grant term is over $60,000. Happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Questions for Samantha?
Is there a representative here with the company?
There is not, Commissioner Mason. Not tonight.
Samantha, was there a timeline on how quick they're wanting to get started on this?
Yes, they would like to be in operation end of next year.
Any other questions?
So there's $60,000 revenue for the first three years?
Correct. Hundred percent. Yes, sir.
Which would be annually based on this investment?
Let me see. And this is just for the county. There would be some depreciation on the personal property, but about $125,000 in year four.
Right. And each year thereafter, most likely?
Correct.
As well as revenue to the city of Concord?
Absolutely. Yes.
Also. Great. Okay, any other, yes, sir?
Just one quick question. They're estimating 30 employees.
30 new jobs, yes, sir.
30 new jobs. Are those going to be people that they bring from other states? Are they going to hire those locally, more than likely?
Those would be new, new jobs that they create, and hopefully, you know, local to the area. Yes, sir.
I'd understand, maybe the higher supervision jobs may be transferred in, but surely that wouldn't be with just two or three. So we'd be gaining somewhere around 25, 28 new jobs.
Correct. Yes, sir.
And that's good. And so I'm, I'm very pleased to have them come be with us.
Okay, anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and we did, this has been advertised for a public hearing. So at this time, I will open the public hearing and invite anybody to the podium that would like to speak on this matter. Okay, seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, what would be your pleasure on this item?
I've got a couple of comments and remarks that I would like to make.
Okay, would you, Rod, you want to do that now, or you want to wait till we have a motion on the floor for discussion?
I would rather just go ahead and have a little discussion before.
All right.
Before a motion is made, whether it's for me or from one of the other commissioners. Well, seeing that a company representative's not here, I was going to tell them here that, you know, we welcome them to Cabarrus County, and we welcome any company that wants to do business in our community, whether they're coming in or opening here. We, we appreciate that. And we, we have an excellent community to live and work in, and so we're thankful for their interest. However, I will say that I understand, you know, them doing business in New York and New Jersey, Maryland, I would be trying to relocate to a, to a better area myself. You know, I know that their states are not as business-friendly as our area in Cabarrus County and, and North Carolina, so, so I can understand that. You know, and my comments that I want to make is not in regards to the company itself. I'm sure they're, they're a great company, upstanding. Obviously, they've been in business for a while. My comments are more geared towards our economic development policy. And, you know, one of my first concerns would be is that we all know that there's a labor shortage out there. We see hiring signs all around the county, Concord, each of the municipalities. We see, I drive by the bus garage the other day for Cabarrus County, and they have probably 10 hiring signs, big banner as well. They can't, they can't find employees. I know there's businesses in our I know there's businesses in our community that's had to reduce hours, if not close down, because of a labor shortage. So my concern is, is that here we have a company that is wanting to move to our area. And if we give them a tax break, there's going to be an unfair advantage for this company to be able to pay higher wages compared to the companies that are currently operating in Cabarrus County. So right around the corner, I know there's a nursery. And I'm not sure whether they're short on help or not. But I would imagine that it could be similar employment options between those two companies. But this, with a company coming in, we're going to give them a tax break. They have the ability to pay employees more. And they're going to be pulling from the already small pool of people now, of the employment market. So as I said, it gives them an unfair, it gives them it gives them an advantage over the companies that have been here in Cabarrus County, operating, doing business, that are currently here and paying a full tax bill. So I can't imagine that this is sending the correct message. If this board approves this, I imagine that's not sending a good message to our currently businesses, the businesses that are currently operating here in Cabarrus County. Also, too, I know it's talked about that, you know, these that these tax breaks that we give to companies relocating, coming to our area, that it keeps the tax rate low for the citizens of Cabarrus County. But I would argue that that seems not to be the case because we have one of the highest property tax rates in this region. And that includes Mecklenburg County next door. So over the last eight years, we have seen a number of these being approved. But we've also seen a record-high property tax rate. So it doesn't seem to really match the argument. And also, in addition to that, our local taxpayer, how does it make them feel whenever we're a select group of people, as in this board or the city council, gets to pick and decide who gets a tax break and who doesn't? So whenever you have a small group of individuals deciding that, how does it make, how does it make the local taxpayer feel whenever their property tax rate has been continuously increased over the last eight years? But we're going to allow a company coming in from outside of our community and give them a tax break? It makes the local taxpayer feel like that they have been shafted ultimately because of increased taxes. So, you know, with these, you know, these thoughts in my mind, I just cannot vote for this tax break. Like I said, you know, I appreciate the company being interested in our community and wanting to do business here, as I thank all of the companies that we have in Cabarrus County that are doing business here. So this is not a reflection on the company, but more so the reflection on our economic development policy.
Okay, any other comments anyone would like to make?
I would like to respond to a couple of the things that you've said there. And I think that, first of all, when you talk about the tax rate, then I think that you have to talk about the entire story. If you're going to compare the tax rate of Cabarrus County to the tax rate of Mecklenburg County, then I think you also need to compare the valuation. I think that if you talk to just about any property owner in Mecklenburg County, they will tell you that for a comparable dwelling unit in Mecklenburg County, they're paying higher taxes than Cabarrus County. I would be surprised if you would hear anything different than that. So when you talk about those things, I think you have to give the taxpayers the full benefit of the full explanation of rate versus valuation. Now, we are in the process of a revaluation here in Cabarrus County. We've talked about it numerous times over the last probably three or four months and have tried as much as possible to educate the public on the process. We've had the schedule of values out. We've talked about how the Tax Department goes about placing value on property in the county. We've talked about when they will receive those notices in the mail, which I think February, February is when the notices will come out. And then there will be a period of time that they will have an opportunity to challenge those values. And then they will actually receive a tax bill in July after this board sets the tax rate based on the new valuation. We've also talked about three different programs that we have here in the county for people that are having difficulty paying their taxes. One of those things that we have available is a deferment program. So that if somebody is a senior citizen and they can't afford to pay their taxes, they can defer those taxes until they're ready to sell their property. The last time I checked, I think we had one person in the county that was taking advantage of that program. And I say those things just to emphasize the fact that when you talk about tax rates, you need to talk about the entire story. And you need to talk about what people are actually paying. When we talk about how this impacts other businesses in the county, I think from my perspective, and everybody's entitled to a different opinion, if I'm looking at this new company coming into Cabarrus County making a $20 million, $20 million investment in our tax base, we're giving them a break for the first three years while they get up and running. And then for every year thereafter, based on our current tax rate, they're going to be paying $125,000 in property taxes that this board in turn can use to meet the needs of the county. That's how we pay for our parks. That's how we pay for our schools. That's how we pay for all the things that we have to do. When we talk about taxes, reducing taxes, then if, I think if we were in a recession, if we were not seeing inflation on the price of what it costs us to build a school, I could see how we could do that. But to, and you have to be perfectly honest. When we look at a high school that we thought was overly expensive five, six years ago, and it cost us $78 million, I think that's what it was for West Cabarrus High School. And then when we look at projections today that to build that same high school today is going to cost us $130 million, the difference in that money's got to come from somewhere. This is $125,000 of it. If I were another small business, then I would look at 30 people having jobs in Cabarrus County, maybe having better jobs than they have today. That gives them disposable income that they're going to spend in our local small businesses. So, you know, from my perspective, it is a plus all the way around. So based on those comments, I would move to approve an economic development agreement, three years at 85% between Nicolock Paving Stones LLC and Cabarrus County, and to authorize the county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the board, subject to review or revision by the county attorney. Is there a second for that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion. And you're going to ask for comments, too?
Yes, sir. We have a motion and a second, so the floor is open for discussion.
I mean, I just want to talk just for a little bit about a different way that I look at it. Everything you said is 100% true. It builds the tax base. And there's people out there, I know, that are adamantly against any type of a tax incentive because they think that they will come anyway. And I've always said, that might be true 20 years ago, 30 years ago. But now, that's not true because we're competing with neighbor counties, neighbor states. And they literally are rolling the red carpet out to get these businesses to come to their community for several reasons. They're starving for the tax revenue, and they need the jobs. So the aspect that I wanted to talk about, that means probably more to me than anything, and that is our students. Between the three school systems that we have, Kannapla City Schools, Cabarrus County Schools, and Rowan Community College, between those three entities, we graduate somewhere in the range of 4,000 students a year. All of those students don't go to college. They don't all go to the military. So what do the other, let's just say 50%, do? They got to have jobs. And it's our job to try to provide jobs for them through people that come into this community or want to come in. And, you know, if you've got children and grandchildren, wouldn't you like to have your children and grandchildren to have a job right here in Cabarrus County, close to you, rather than travel to West Charlotte or to the triad area or even out of state? To me, that's simple. You want your family close. And we do what we can to create jobs, let industry and business come into the county. And then, as the chairman said, the revenue part is good, too, simply because we're in a growing community. And when you've got a growing community, it's just the same as a household. If you, just you and your wife or husband, and you've got two children, and then another one comes along, or maybe even another one comes along, what do you have to do? You have to increase your revenue because you've got more expense. And that's what happens on a county level as well. I'm just trying to speak common sense to you guys, you know, and the viewing audience. To me, this is not rocket science. The community grows, the need grows, and therefore, the revenue has to grow. And so you've got a choice: increase taxes or bring industries in that's going to help pay the bills. We've got one industry here in Cabarrus County that I am so proud of that they came. They chose us. They could have chose anywhere. But the debt service that we have for a high school will be paid for by this one business when they get the incentive period finished. They'll be paying enough taxes to pay the debt for a school. And if they didn't do that, guess who'd be paying the school debt? We would, the taxpayers. And Chris, you and I'll never, you know, we're friends and we're colleagues. And we'll never agree on this particular item because, maybe I'm just old, I don't know. But I'm just trying to tell you that we need to do everything we can to get businesses here. Because in the long run, 20 years, 30 years from now, we'll all be, we'll be gone. I'll be gone for sure. But that revenue will keep coming. And the county's going to keep growing. And, you know, I'm pro economic development. And Sam, I thank you, and Paige, and I met Stephanie tonight. Thank you for what you do to promote Cabarrus County, to help us be a better place and make our families' life better. Better jobs and all of that. So anyway, I seconded the motion, and I'm through with my discussion. So I guess if anybody else has anything to say, now it's time to do it.
I'm going to chime back in for a second.
And let's see if anybody else has a discussion. No? Okay, go ahead.
All right. So to respond to you, Chairman, and the information that you had brought up, we do want to be completely open and transparent with the public. So whenever we're talking about property tax rates, our property tax rate is 74 cents. Mecklenburg is 47, Rowan is 58, Stanley is 61, Union is 58, and Ardell is 50. Now, ours is 74. So this is being completely open and honest and telling the truth about the tax rate. So clearly, ours is significantly higher than all the surrounding areas. And I understand what you're saying about, you know, as far as evaluations in the community, taxable value in the community. Well, I can, I would, I'd be willing to bet that Rowan, Stanley, certainly Rowan and Stanley have less of a tax base than Cabarrus County. And their rates are a lot lower than ours. So if we want to be completely open and transparent and honest about it, that's the truth. These are the listed rates. This is from the Association of County Commissioners, right here in this book. And if, you know, if we want to say that they're wrong, then that's something we'll have to take up with them. But it is clear and black and white on paper that our tax rate is much higher. And I know that you had mentioned a program for senior citizens that if they can defer their taxes. But if you are a citizen that has lived and worked in this community your entire life, paid for your house, and then you're still having to pay property taxes every single year on that, how would that make you feel to have to come in and apply for a program to defer your taxes until you sell or you die and before your family inherits? How would that make you feel if you've worked hard in this community this entire time and you can't afford the taxes because they keep increasing? Not only does the increase in the tax rates affect property owners, anyone who is renting, that means a rate increase on anyone that's renting. Because whoever owns that house or that apartment complex is going to be paying more in property tax. And I'm sure they're going to pass that along to the tenant. Simple as that. Commissioner Shew, you know, I am all for economic development. I grew up in an entrepreneurial family. You know, you're not going to find a bigger champion of jobs and business than myself. I mean, that's just the reality of it. I was born and raised in a business. So I know exactly how it operates, and I know how hard it is to run a business. You know, and we certainly want to have jobs in the community for the individuals that are not going to college, if, you know, that are not moving away. We certainly want to have that here in our community. There's, you know, I don't think anybody is arguing against that at all. But as I had, go back to my earlier point, there's a labor shortage in our community. And as if we're giving these companies that are from outside of our area, we're giving them an advantage over the currently operating businesses in our community.
Okay, any other discussion? Yes, sir.
And I promise you one thing, I'm getting educated. Going into, you know, before I got appointed here, you know, I was much in line with what Chris is saying. But as you become more educated, and when I met with those folks, and, you know, the history, I think the last 20 years, for every $1 we gave out, we got six in return, is what we were, I think that's what's on record. So, you know, they're both right. Both of those guys are right. They're both, you know, I respect both of them's opinion, respect them as individuals. And Lynn's right, they're never going to agree on this, but that's okay. But, you know, just doing the simple math, you know, I'm a simple person. And I think any person here would give a dollar to get six back anytime. So that's just all I wanted to add to it.
Commissioner Farr, can you explain to me how that came about? For every dollar that we get six in return, tell me where that is or how?
When I was brought on and went through training or whatever you want to call it, they gave me facts and figures of the last 20 years of incentive packages that had been given out. And that was what was the return on investment.
And so that is...
Now, here again, I don't know what's true.
Well, that's what I was getting ready to say. So the simple math would tell you that. A simple math would say, okay, well, what we're giving them back, this is what's coming in. But what's not included in that figure is all the growth that comes along with that. We're having to hire more EMS, hire more police to build more schools. I mean, there's far more that goes into that than just looking at the simple number and saying, for every dollar we get, we get six more back. That is completely misleading and is a myth that is being peddled in the community. And it's just simply not the truth. There's a lot more behind it than that, but...
Other comments?
I think if there is a myth that's being peddled in the community, I think it is to talk about items like tax rates without talking about the full story. If you're going to compare Cabarrus County's tax rate with Stanley County's tax rate, and I'm not disputing the rates, they are very public, very advertised, very easy to get. So there's nothing inaccurate about anything that's in that book. So, there's nothing inaccurate about anything that's in that book, but you have to talk about the, if, if you're gonna compare the tax rate, then you gotta compare the valuation, then you also have to compare the services that are, that are being offered in the community. Now, I'm certainly not gonna sit here and say anything negative about the EMS services that are being offered in Stanley County because I'm not familiar with them, but I do know that we have top-rate services in Cabarrus County. I use that as just one example. We can also talk about our law enforcement, our sheriff's office, we can talk about the, the way that, the, the resources that we provide to them, we can talk about our parks, we can talk about our facilities, like the, the, the new barn that's being used on a daily basis out at Frankless Park, and you can go down the list, and so, you need to compare those things as well. And it is not a myth, I think since I have been on this board, our new investment in, in projects like we're talking about tonight has been in excess of three-point-five billion dollars. Currently, the, and now, most of the, most of those projects, not all of them, but most of those projects have long, the incentive period has long ended. So, we will realize twenty-six million dollars in annual income from, from those projects that we would not have in the budget were it not for those businesses. And you talk about the growth that comes along with it, and that's, that's the unfortunate piece of it, is that growth is not governed by these companies that come to our community. The growth that's coming to our community is coming if we did not have one single one of those companies. Now, there may be a few people that moved to Cabarrus County for one of those jobs, but the majority of those people that would be buying residences in Cabarrus County, in my opinion, are people that work outside of Cabarrus County. They just come here to sleep at night, that makes us a bedroom community. So, if we did not engage in the efforts that we have to try to balance that residential growth with some industrial and commercial growth that does provide that tax base, then we really would be in trouble. If we were to replace the revenue that we receive from the investment that we've had over the past ten years, we would have to increase the tax rate about ten cents in order to get that same amount of revenue. So, you know, you can talk for a long time about, about the needs, and certainly, that's, that's a discussion that, that this board's gonna be having in earnest over the next months as we begin, it seems like we're always in budget season, but, but that will be cranking up again, so we're gonna have to talk about how we address the needs of our schools and the growth that they've experienced, which we've all had discussions about that. So, it's, it's all, it's a, it's a big picture, it's hard to isolate one single thing without telling the entire story.
Well, you know, certainly you can accuse me of not telling the entire story, but I feel that you've not been telling the entire story. So, you know, we can, you know, you said it best whenever you said the growth is coming anyway. So, why do we need to give tax breaks to these million-dollar, billion-dollar companies? Why should we have to give tax breaks to them? The growth's coming here already. And to touch on something that Commissioner Shu said earlier, there are communities out there that, I have talked to commissioners in small, in small counties, and they have a very aggressive tax break, tax incentive policy, and they still can't get companies to locate to the area. People want to be in Cabarrus County, we are close to the interstates, we have a good community, we have, we're right here, close to a metropolitan city. And this twenty-six million that you had mentioned that we would not have gotten if we did not incentivize these companies, I would argue that that is, that is not telling the complete truth either because majority of those companies are gonna come here regardless. They want to be in this area, they want to be in our community.
Would you be willing to acknowledge that that is your opinion, that they would come anyway?
Sure. Well, it is my opinion, just as it's your opinion.
Right. It's my opinion that they would not.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. So, as Commissioner Shu, very appropriately, said, we could talk about this from now until midnight tonight, and we're not gonna-
We can, and we're not, and we're not gonna do that. And, and just as Commissioner Shu said, you know, there's gonna be things that we just absolutely don't agree on, but I still have the respect for each and every one of you up here. We just have differing opinions, and, and this is, this is our duty, this is our job to discuss this and debate this, and, and that's why we're here.
Just, just one more real quick comment. All of us have been around here longer than to know, well, maybe, maybe not all of us, but especially me, I remember when Hardee's first come to town. Does anybody besides me remember when Hardee's first come to town?
Yes, sir.
Anybody remember? You remember what their hamburgers were?
They were-
Fifteen cent. How much you get for a hamburger now? Six dollars. Oh, man, it's funny, you know, but that's growth, and it's, everything goes up, the cost of living is high, and, and you get more, you pay more, and in the end, it balances out somehow, you know, but anyway.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor that has been seconded. Is there any further discussion before we move to a vote? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
That motion passes four to one. And we move now to reports. First up is to receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards or committees.
Longa asked me to pass on some information from Active Living and Parks. December fifth, from twelve-thirty to three-thirty is the seniors' Christmas party at the Cabarrus Arena, all are welcome. December seventh, from four to seven, is the community input meeting for the St. Stevens Church Road Park property. December seventh and fourteenth at eleven a.m. is yoga in the barn at Frankless Park. And December ninth, from ten a.m. to one, is the woodland, is the woodland Christmas crafts at the barn at Frankless Park.
Thank you. The public input session on December twelfth, St. Stevens Park, I've had a number of inquiries from folks out in that part of the county, asking about what's going on out there. I think they've been doing some timber studies and wildlife studies, I think there may be were master plans, so three different things going on, so hopefully, there'll be some more publicity to go out about that to benefit the people in that area. Any other reports? Yes, sir?
Just real quickly, I'm on the Centralina Council of Government, Regional Council of Government, it's a nine-county area, and for the last year and a half, two years, we've been working on a regional transportation plan, and we had a meeting, matter of fact, just last week about that, and it's progressing along, and County Manager Downs, you're familiar with that, and trying to improve transportation, as all of us that live here know that transportation is seems to be getting a little bit more difficult, and so, we're working on a plan for that, and then, of course, I'm also on the Water and Soil Authority Board, and the expansion project on that is still continuing to move forward. With the lack of rain, we've been able to make a lot of progress, and we actually might even be a little bit ahead of the ball right now, but everything seems to be moving quite good, so that's mine, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Any other reports?
We can all do yoga at the park.
I think that'd be a fabulous idea. Yeah. But we have to be especially careful because we're not supposed to be together as commissioners more than two at a time. So, if we count that as a social event, perhaps we can, can do that, 'cause the public is invited to that as well. Okay, we move now to general comments by board members, if anybody has anything else that they would like to add. I would just like to say that happy Thanksgiving to everyone coming up this Thursday, also to, we've had some really great events going on in the community over the past week or so. This past Friday night, the City of Concord had their tree lighting ceremony, I always say that's the closest we'll get to a Hallmark movie downtown here because it's really, really neat, lot of people on the street, lot of children's groups and, and other groups performing during that. They even made it snow, and it was almost seventy degrees outside, so that was pretty cool as well. But it was a great event, followed by the Christmas parade, I think the ninety-fifth Annual Christmas Parade in Concord on Saturday. That was followed up Saturday night by a tree lighting ceremony in downtown Conapolis. I think that Harrisburg also has a tree lighting ceremony coming up, so, and then a parade, nighttime parade in Conapolis in a couple of weeks. Mount Pleasant also has a Christmas parade. So, there are lots of opportunities to get out in the community and enjoy the holiday season, so I would encourage everybody to take advantage of that. And are there any other comments? If not, we do not have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you all for joining us tonight, both online as well as in person, and we will see you again the first Monday in December.